Application of Dean Redden request a special permit for an existing accessory apartment at 51 Glen Avenue. Request, well, for the continuation of a comprehensive permit for 27 James Road and the request for the governor's landing on Milford Street. And so, anybody here with Dean?
Yes.
I'll see what.
If you don't sign in.
I am. I'm only here for the first property on the list, 51.
Okay.
Paul, is he concerned?
Yeah.
Or not concerned?
All right. We know it's been a in-law apartment for a long time. If you go into the house, you go to the left of Diane, because you have. I don't. Anybody have a problem with it?
Can you discuss possibly waiting to be?
Oh, okay.
In honor of Diane Judd for her years of service as it was her home.
You're held up more than that.
So I figured.
I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with that.
Can you work in there?
I'll move that we wait the fee for the application of 51 Glen Avenue.
You have this photo of the board. Deborah, exactly.
Eric Russell. Bill Lutz.
Thank you.
All right, so, anybody?
We haven't done it before, but I don't really know why. Is Eric, is there any problem with the legal stuff on this?
I don't see any problem with the process. I was just curious. The plan I saw, just, I'm not aware of the property, the plan doesn't, you know, show it by law. It doesn't show size.
It is 864 square feet. On the back of this application, I attached the original building permit.
Yeah, it's originally, it's basically pre-existing on forms to a certain extent.
Pre-existing, and it's under, it's under the thousand square foot.
Yeah, it was, what, 2,000?
Yeah.
I remember there was a case over on West Street where we gave it to somebody, they had assigned purchase and sale, the new person was going to do that. So it was, in that case, we were before, and, and I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's, it's obviously an attractive thing to be a selling point.
Right.
So I remember.
But see, what we did before, like with the house that they sold on West Borough, the Coriolis, she actually brought, the people came in.
Yes, yes.
To get the permit.
I mean, we've only turned down one.
But Dean, that brings a new owner.
In all the years.
Well, what this does, though, is this changes, in other words, like before you legally, as far as we were concerned, couldn't advertise a property as an in-law apartment because.
It wasn't.
It wasn't. Once the purchase and sale, once you sold the house, it disappeared.
Yeah.
This is coming up to a different situation.
It would be a very, it would be a thing that you'd want to market, that it has this in there. You, you know, that you, that would be.
There's no problem with getting it. It's a problem of whether you're getting it prior to buying a property or after you've signed the purchase and sale.
As long as we.
Having that purchase, it would be best on the out.
I think, to me, the stickler is as long as we get an affidavit.
It just provided an affidavit for the new owners.
For the new owners, as long as we.
To be provided at the closing.
Yeah, that's a great reason. Now, we usually ask, if you don't mind, Chairman, we usually ask neighbors what their concerns are, and I wanted to make sure we could choose.
Well, that's why I'm here, as a neighbor. My concerns are handled by the affidavit, and I already looked at the, at the affidavit, because I got here early. As long as it meets the accessory part of my permits, 7.6, part D, ownership and occupancy. Okay, okay.
Yeah, because if you, and if you stipulated that in the statement, so they're going to sign it so they know it, and somebody's not just going to buy it and then think a year later.
Yeah.
Wow, I can rent this out to anybody.
Right.
Yeah. But see, that's what are my concerns, as long as it's understood.
Do you know that the state, because of the housing crunch, that's what they want now? They want to take any in-law apartment that's not being used as an in-law and have it rented out?
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, except this is, this is a single occupancy zone.
Right, well, they all are, basically. Anybody that gets an in-law apartment is totally single.
Yeah, it takes.
Could you just have the gentleman say his name for the record?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Basil Minnick.
And what's your address?
55 Hartford Avenue, South.
He signed it.
Okay, just makes our job easier. No, I'm, I, I don't have a problem with the 10.
Yeah, you know yourself that, where you lived there, that even though the apartment was there, and Diane never wanted to do anything with it.
Yeah. 15 years, yeah.
Yeah. Chairman, are you ready to have a motion on this? Are you ready for?
Yeah.
You ready for motions?
There's nobody on the meeting that's wanted to do it. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, make it. Anyone out there have any comments? Okay. Anyone out there have any comments, concerns? Okay. I make a test that we approve a special permit for an existing accessory apartment at 51 Glen Ave. The apartment was added in 1996, and it is contingent upon.
The, no, you said you made the request.
I lost you.
You said I made the request that we accept.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I mean, I'm.
I make a motion that we grant a special permit for existing accessory accessory apartment at 51 Glen Ave contingent upon the, to see affidavit being signed at the closing when the house is sold. Or probably just a second.
Yeah.
You have this photo of the board. Deborah, exactly.
Slide.
Bill Lutz.
20-day appeal period. If you know that. Everybody wants to take this money like you. I know, but I'm just saying that it's.
A million dollars, as long as. That those two issues are.
Amy and I, we're going to try and fast-track the decision, because obviously she has a timeline of the purchase and sale. So Amy, I think we said we tried to get that pulled together by.
Friday, if possible, Ted, you can pop in before.
And then that will get recorded with the clerk's office. Once it's stamped in with the clerk's office, that's the 20-day appeal period. After the 20-day period lapses, you get certification that no appeal has been taken from the clerk. You take the decision document from the clerk, bring that to the deeds office, it gets recorded at the deeds office, then it is finalized.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, now, because we changed.
Now, I do.
No.
Just.
I'm going to have a motion to continuance for governor's landing.
Oh, they're not continuing?
No, no, they requested a continuance to April.
Oh, okay.
So, that you enjoyed it?
Yeah.
Did you make a motion for continuance?
I heard this one was. Yeah, doing a lot of them, sending today again?
Yes. I did not break it down, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It was emailed out.
As long as we have it.
All right, then I'll move that the, continue the public hearing scheduled for this evening for Governor's Landing to.
April 19th.
April 19th. Second motion.
You have this order of the board.
Eric Russell.
So the next one on the line, Dean Charlie?
I'm surprised they didn't want to be on for tonight, because they were planning work last night.
Yeah, you said that, didn't you?
Are they ready to finally pull the trigger?
Yeah.
So we have somebody.
We're about ready.
Yeah.
All right, so you guys, you're, you can read it.
27?
You want to play chairman tonight?
Nice, nice working with you, yeah.
I just try, I just always try to be.
All right.
I can share.
Nice guy.
You stay, Mike? No, I can't.
This decision is not for today. Uh, they're returning their, their performance selection policy, are you going to be civil?
Oh, I saw that.
Wow.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
All very forward.
Yeah, that's pretty hilarious.
They don't have to sit up.
Yeah, I mean, during public comment.
It's a violation of. No, you can't throw these out.
This should just be a lot.
It should be very rude.
Yeah.
Wow, it's amazing. I have to say, I absolutely love our town meetings. I enjoy them, the no-entend, the best entertainment.
Been in town too long.
Finally, you know, you try to speak two or three times, I'll stop you after two. So I'm leaving the gavel to you tonight.
All right.
This is the public hearing for comprehensive permits for the property located 27 James Road. Do we have somebody from the applicant here, something? Dean's up there.
Yes, Dean Harrison and Eli Leno. Excuse us.
Right, do you want to provide us an update with status of the project?
Yes, I would love to. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dean Harrison. I'm the consultant for the applicant. Since the last hearing, one of the major discussions were regarding around drainage and our compliance with stormwater standards. We had met previously to discuss what was needed and what way to address the outstanding issues regarding the stormwater management. The reasoning being, wonderful units are not required to follow stormwater management standards. However, we met with the town, discussed the situation. After that meeting, we spoke, our engineer met with the town peer reviewer, who I understand has not finished his review as tonight, but we wanted to continue the hearing with the new information. And they came back and provided updated drawings, which I'll discuss shortly. They also provided stormwater, lack of a better term, plan as required. And it appears now that, after further review and discussions, and some changes to the applica, to the plans, that we do meet all the applicable stormwater management standards that are required to meet if we were not a, basically a four-unit development. So we have complied with that. We will be rescinding our request for any waivers of the stormwater management section of the bylaws or any of the ordinances. We have not prepared that, but I will send that draft out shortly. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to share the plans. I know you have some have copies in front of it, but I could also share what's on the screen. Can everybody see that?
Yep, we have copyright, big copyright.
Okay, you know, I know you also have a copy, great. I will get to the. Basically, seen these before. This does show some additional soil test data. Try to zoom in a little bit. Excuse me here. Some more of the detail. There's another section I want to bring out. Oh, here we go. So this basically takes in the, some of the drainage requirements that we have to pre-construction, showing some of the limit of work, a stockpile areas and so forth. So basically, this shows you the condo plans. Just going up a little further. There we go. This plan here shows basically how the drainage would work and the details of the drainage. I'm not an engineer, and I don't claim to be one, but I like to point out a few things here. I won't get into the technical stuff. But you can see here that we basically have set up non-disturbed areas, which is this darker green around the property, which would be a condition of the comprehensive permit that this area can never be disturbed and left in its natural state. We show some underground storage, drainage storiers, infiltration systems here, here, here. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. So these, yep, these gridded areas infiltration system, infiltration system, which is used, as you know, to collect the water and storage so it can drain properly and not, and keep it within our property line. We're also doing permeable pavement, which allows drainage to naturally go through the impervious material. We do have some wedge outcropping that we'll have to deal with. But this, I think the main point here, I know your, your engineer is doing his peer review, and obviously, we're hoping that he will agree with us on this, and that this does take in consideration all the concerns that we've have heard. And the, what we think is especially important for everyone to understand tonight is this area would be considered a buffer area, which will not be disturbed, and will be built into the condo docks. So for any future ownership, they can't go back here and start disturbing any of this buffer tree, this buffer area. In other words, it would be remained as basically conservation land or open land not to be disturbed. So that's really up, yeah, that's the update. Like I said, we do not need any additional waivers for the stormwater management, which I think is, is, is obviously an improvement. We meet all the design standards while under DEM, we do not, excuse me, DEP, we do not need to. However, we do. And additionally, I think we met the desires of the board to make sure this design met all the standards, even though we did not have to. So I hope the board feels the same way, hope the abuders feel the same way, and we feel that your peer review will support this design relating to stormwater management. Eli, would you like to add anything?
No, I think that really covered it, Dean, but obviously, we'd be willing to answer any questions the board may have in light of the fact that you haven't received peer review yet. We certainly understand that those questions may arise next month.
Dean, thank you for dealing with the stormwater issue. As you know, that one is near and dear to my heart. I think that that neighborhood absolutely shouldn't have a problem with that. So thank you for, and thank you, your engineer, for working with our engineer. We're going to have to wait for our guy to get back with the peer review, though, obviously, yeah.
Yes, understood, and we wanted, we obviously did not want you postpone the hearing today, especially that we had an update for the the board and the abuders. So, yeah, so we, we understand there might be some minor modifications after the peer review, and obviously, we will work to address those.
See, updated waivers, yeah. Dean, did you find a list of waivers in, or are you waiting for the peer review?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping nothing changes. Basically, I, I did modify the peer, the the waivers. I'm going to share those if you don't mind, if I can find them. So here's the ones we submitted before, but this is going to be updated. We removed the, basically, the up here, we had the stormwater system that we asked for a waiver, so we no longer need that. These have to do more with the subdivision rules and regulations. All we're asking is basically that you approve it instead of the planning board. Most of the times, I've seen towns just say this is not necessary in the decision, so they don't grant the waiver, it's just not required. I'll leave that up to your, your attorneys. And then down here, the only thing, as this is a condo, the only thing we're asking a waiver for is the front setback as noted above. And it's, and the closest house is 24 feet to the front property line versus 40. But everything else, we meet, all the town bylaws, and so these really are.
The other.
Yeah, the other three.
The other one there, Dean, is density, that instead of doing the four-feet simple lots, having it as one conforming lot with greater density. So it's, it's the four where one primary use is allowed.
Yeah.
So we'll submit this in the next week for our final, our final, unless the, oh, we can wait till the peer review gets back to us, and then we'll, we'll finalize it.
Yeah, wait till the, back to it just once. I mean, you guys have met multiple, multiple times, so we should be pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, most of it is just, we covered the bases on the subdivision. Since it's really not a subdivision, but we like to throw it out there to make sure it's clear. And most of the times, local attorneys or the attorneys on the project will just basically say we don't grant it because it's not required. If you want to discuss this with your attorney, we could either keep it like that, or we can remove it completely. And really, other than hearing back from the, the peer review, we have no more for presentation purposes.
I have comments if there's nothing.
Can I have, can I have the floor for a minute, just to respond to the drainage plant?
Please hear from the board. Do you guys have any other questions?
Now, if the gentleman is, as far as, you know, pieces in order to show it to us this way.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see that they have engineered stormwater, and they're not even doing. Rain gardens, they're doing subterranean ones, which look better. They're actually much more, much more expensive than doing rain garden. I'm surprised, but either way, they both do the same solution. But no, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor. You got to, you got to hear it back anyways.
Yeah, I mean, anything happens, so we can hear it, yeah, so. So, in Florida.
Westboro Road. Could we show the plan back up there again, so I can point out?
This is an accurate second year to murder.
Sometimes. But will they be able to see?
Dean, could you bring the plans back up for us again?
Of course.
I'll find it like this point two to be either way.
Does that work? You got, you see that?
Yeah, we can see it, yeah.
So, so my concern is, so here's my property over here, that is, is on the eastern part of unit one and two. That, that abuts my property. And here, right off of James Road, you can see that as you come up James Road, they have unit four close to James Road. Fine, drainage goes back, that's not a problem. Unit three, I can't comment on because it doesn't abut my property, but unit, unit two and one, if you could bring that back again, where you had before, that was my property.
Yes.
Unit one especially, you notice here that this is a big rock outcrop here. So the drainage from the rain is basically, this is like 436 feet, 430 feet. The drainage starts to go toward, down toward my property. You can see it goes to 432, 430. And that the unit that they're proposing right here is at 428 feet. And if you look at the top of the graph of blue lines here, they're proposing to put this unit right on the edge of that hill that dives right down to my property, where my raise septic system comes right directly up to that property line. This is a raised septic system that I have here, and this, this drainage will dive from four, from 428, where they proposed to build, down to 404, where my property is right there. So it's about a 26-inch decline in a very short set of period of woods. And then they propose putting an infiltration system here, which, I read this, this, this note. It says, "Final locations and elevations of the infiltration systems to be determined based on soil conditions found at the time of construction." So isn't that sort of putting the cart before the horse a little bit, where you're going to be doing this development? You don't even know where you're going to put the infiltration systems, and even with an infiltration system, where's that water going? Before this, here, this big outcrop, there was no perking, but the woods from here to me allowed perking of, and distributing the rainfall. Now you have no perking here, you're making hardscape of this whole area here, and concentrating all of this water on this downhill dive right to my backyard that's working as a dam, my raise system, and my house is just right across my yard there. This, these two lots, as far as I'm concerned, are undeveloped. I don't know why they're jamming these lots in here, when they've got this whole conservation area over here that they're leaving, that dives right down to Westboro Road, all through the woods. Nobody that would complain about the drainage, nor would it harm anybody. So I have a very grave concern about this plan here. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing your concern. Yeah, you got to sign. Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond briefly to the abuders' concerns and some of his comments? As you know.
One sec. I wanted to be able to listen. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
You can go ahead, Dean.
Yes. One is, as you know, under stormwater management standards, we are not to allow or increase any runoff to other properties other than our own. So obviously, we said we're going to meet that standard, and we do. There will be some natural runoff, because we are not disturbing that area in the back for a good portion of the property. While there, this is preliminary, as you know, we will need to submit a full set of building permit that meets all the standards, which also meets, means that we need to make sure that when we give the final set of drawings to the building inspector, that, you know, we address any preliminary items that were not addressed. If there was a change that's needed, as you know with any comprehensive permit, if for some reason the design changes, we have to come back to the board and let the board know what those design changes are, or any other changes to our application. So while I, I understand his concern, we do, your peer review is looking at this right now. We feel it meets all the standards, and at the end of the project, the property will drain appropriately based on our new engineering plans.
Do we have any other further comment?
I just was wondering about the well.
I just was wondering about the well on that uh, first property. We discussed last time that my septic is right next to it almost. And what the was, so my septic
Has to be a hundred.
Has to be a hundred.
Has to be a hundred feet.
Yeah, we we are following state regulations to where our septic is related to our wells and the Abudas wells, so.
So it's my septic to your well.
No, same thing. We have to address that. We can't have our our well close to you. They look at what's on the adjoining properties, so.
Yeah, the the standard is a hundred feet. There is a um, they will get, I'm sure down, I think it's fifty. That's right. Yeah, um, downhill is a little less fifty, but the standard is a hundred feet, and there should be no with a property of this size, there should be no problem making a hundred, a hundred feet. They don't want it drinkier.
Okay, it's just that I don't think my septic is more than maybe twenty feet from the light line, little tag that he's got up on the property, so I'm just
So um, Dean, I would recommend that uh, is this the recent enough that the Board of Health has
Mine is what came with the house. So the house was built in seventy-one.
Board of Health. You think they want? Okay, Bob says they'll have it. Um, Dean, you might want to check with the Board of Health just to find out where that septic system is, so your well is
Safe.
Safe. You gotta be a hundred feet away from that, obviously. The the one, the property is large enough um, that you could put the well somewhere else. So I I do you know, I
Yes, we'll 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 discuss with the Board of Health. Um, yeah, she does have the new set of plans. Um, we got on the drainage, so uh, we can reach out to her and see if she has any questions regarding the drainage in or the location of our well compared to um, our site and any of the Abudas. So, yeah, we have, we have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a
Yeah.
I could be, yeah, say a few things. Um, just to pick up a little bit on Mr. Simone's comment, I I have noticed that on a plan too, that basically says that infiltrators are located, you know, determined upon the soil conditions found at the time of construction. Um, and it does look like they're positioned directly behind the houses, which ideally but like they hope that uh, they work in that location, but if they don't, um, how do you control the water that would be coming downhill? Uh, he's got an elevated um, septic system. Um, to the extent that you allow water to impact septic system, that's that is a effect on public health and safety. Um, which is one of the basis that you have um taken into consideration when you're viewing this. So I think that's um, pretty critical basically to figure that out, because if you don't put them there, how do you intercept the water that's heading that direction? Um, and by what that, why aren't their tests born instead? Um, that you could find out is the soil at a lot location? Uh, and if it's not, uh, then that sort of calls into question those two lots. Um, just because he understand that his septic system is, he says it right up to, there's probably a setback that's required. It's right on the board health regulation. Put it in with with right in that area, and there is a free considerable drop off in the grade, which makes it hard to get some of the water down somehow. Um, so I, I think if the uh, if in his review, if you could maybe request that the um, consulting engineer of the town look at that just to see um, you know, if you feel that this is something where it could be checked out ahead of time, uh, because it seems like the whole design um, is premise of those working, but the note, you know, the if the note, the notes there included there for a reason. Um, so um, I I don't think that has to be a mystery where it's gonna work out. And you might probably want to do that before you start construction.
And after, well, nothing we could find ask. Dean, just as a question, did you perk this place? Did you perk all four lots already?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. They did have some test pit information in there. Um, so I will have to follow up with the engineer and ask if they've done any. Um, one thing is to address um the point that was just made. Once again, this is a comprehensive permit, which just requires preliminary drawings at this point. If at any time during the process, we identify a reason that we could not put that um, drainage um, retention area in that location, we will have to bring it back to the town for um, a review of a new location. Um, we, you know, we still have to go through the um um, Board of Health on the review of the the septic, um, the well locations, um, um, the drainage. Um, so this is just the first step. Um, final designs will be submitted to the board, mostly as they always put that as a condition, and will be reviewed by at that time, the board usually has to go back to the peer reviewer to make sure that we've complied with everything in the permit and that we comply with all the state requirements. So I'm not gonna get into hypotheticals tonight about, well, if this doesn't perk. We are not increasing any runoff to that gentleman's property. We understand his concerns. We're leaving additional natural buffer area to insist. And the reason for that drainage area there is to capture the runoff and the drainage into that, so it doesn't go down that hill. Um, you know, and obviously during the ownership and the condominium documents, we are required to submit an O and M plan, operation and maintenance plan for the drainage system. Um, you know, I understand people's concerns. Um, not my first rodeo. We've seen strange things happen out on a site. Um, but we are following state law. Um, this isn't a blanket approval. If the board chooses to approve this permit, I have no doubt your attorneys will have conditions in there that protects both the town and the Abudas through the design and construction of these units.
Yeah, you you, Mr. Simone, just as a quick question, how old's your system?
I had, the Hendersons put that in Bobby, Dickie. I worked with them and I I put that in, I'd say sixteen, seventeen years ago.
Okay, um, so another, the reason I ask that question, Dean, is um that means is that there was a perk test done just on the other side of the property, because you're saying it's right on that.
So that their property that they're proposing
You know what I'm saying? On your property, they had to do a perk test to determine
Put the system in.
Yeah, yes. So that data is down the
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So what I'm saying is, if you're looking for that data, uh, it's right, the town, the the Board of Health should have that data. I I know on my side of the hill, it's a gray course, uh, almost like a sand. Um, but then, you know, you 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 move two hundred feet, it can be very different. Um, but there should be some data on that. Uh, it will be determined by the site data, um, having for myself, having trusted an engineers on this, I will say that the place I built down on Rhode Island, it worked.
But Mr. Henderson, just one other statement was when Bobby Henderson, rest in peace, okay? When he uh, built that system,
Yeah.
when we were done, he made me very aware that that was on the bottom of that hillside. And that I had to be very um, make sure that I built, I put a good lawn on the top of that raise system, so I get runoff because he was adamant saying that you can have water coming from that hillside, but you have good perking up there because of the woods. And now they're gonna hardscape seventy-five percent of that. That's, I can see myself running into trouble. Uh, with the with the rock outcrop and then the paving and then the roofing that's gonna come almost all the way back to my property line. Where's that going to go? It's gonna be concentrated right down where
The nice thing in this, my, I just happen to have higher Allen Engineering businesses. They can figure what comes off the roof. That's a known quantity. It's what's coming underground. That's the unknown. Um, and that's the harder one to figure out. Um, one of the details in the plan is that he's got some permeable driveways. So hardscaping, um, I've got a permeable driveway down around, what falls there goes right in.
That's unit two. That's in 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 lot number two. Permeable driveway wasn't in lot one that they I read perme- permeable driveway, they were introducing two, but not in one. And one is really the critical one that I see that's gonna jeopardize my 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 raise system. If you just read
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, is that uh, Senator or
Attorney Leno for the applicant. Um, Mr. Chairman, I think that, again, I we designed this system through our engineers with the understanding that the Abudas have concerns, but I'm not sure how much further we can get tonight to allay those concerns without the peer reviews comments on this.
Just gonna say, could I, but yeah, they made the choice to proceed to it, so I think um, could have waited for the period waited to filter, made the presentation. But since the applicant's heading up, basically, right? Present their side, I I think, you know, this, um, I understood that a lot of, a lot of this will rest upon the engineering review. But in terms of, uh, I would say just about the statement that was made before that any change in the plan require a trip back um here, if it's substantial. And I would think that, you know, you probably can eliminate the note then. You don't need a note that says uh, the location, because this indicates you could say that the note, this was approved, which basically could be interpreted as saying you it's put it somewhere else, uh, as opposed to specifically right here. But um, I think that's something that needs to be looked at, that, you know, just to see if it it's, looks good on paper, but if the infiltrators won't work in that location, it doesn't look good. And to, you know, so the assumption is that it's gonna work. But the note kind of makes you question the assumption because clearly it's it's acknowledging the possibility that's not gonna work. Um, the other thing I noted in the report too is they talked about the infiltrators are designed primarily to capture um roof runoff. And and to the extent possible, I think it's a highlight. Um, so so the um focus is is on the roof runoff. Um, I know the neighbors, another concern that they have a great concern really is about James Road in terms of is there any water that's gonna be directed onto James Road? Uh, and if the infiltrators are, you know, way to the back here and up here, um you're not gonna, they're not positioned in such a way that they would capture any water that would be headed in the James Road direction. Now, maybe there isn't any water heading in that direction, but the concern, I think, that's out there is that the the road is um you know, gets sized up to the engineer on a fairly regular basis. Um, they don't want to see any additional water lower than above what's presently there going in that direction. So that would also in terms of the review, engineer, if you could ask that they um, you know, focus on that as well, just to see that that it's uh, anything that's coming out the site is not be greater than what's presently there.
Um, Chairman, what do you think of um, continuing continuing this until we get the um Absolutely, yeah. We're in possession of making a decision tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to hear from the uh, peer reviewer. Have we received comments from the other town boards or police fire? No, I'll be sure it's a uh, double check ahead of the next meeting for different comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'd like to know if they have any concerns.
Yeah.
I I mean, specifically probably D W, right, as far as um I I assume that when it initially went out to all boards, has there been much change in this iteration as far as the layout from what was initially submitted? I mean, I'll send it out, obviously, regardless from the areas.
Yeah, this has changed.
I was gonna say first. Yeah, with D W and uh, security fire.
Okay.
If they have any comments on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Take a motion to continue?
Sure.
I mean, motion to continue this until the April nineteenth, is that correct, me?
Yes. Take a motion. You have sort of the word across the line.
Oh, you was I.
Thank you. Do you want me to ask Stan Tech to look at the concerns as raised for lot one?
Yes.
And two.
And so
Yes.
If they both company. Yeah, because they have Yeah. Miss. Ninety feet. Which is in terms of soil, it was positive. Um, we still have to improve minutes.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't see anything.
I did.
Thank you all.
I did.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
People like Thank you all.
Thank you.
And it's on test push thing, which I will there's an A there, which can cause me
Don't you hate that though? I can't handle my own stuff. I used to always Yeah. Sorry.
Not just locked on.
Did you just sign it? The engineer, the peer review looks at the whole plan. That's what the the whole purpose of peer review is to go through.
Having them
Yeah, I I talked to the engineer like, I don't wanna say every week, but usually it's more every week with the concerns, because my my, I don't want to be hurt, my big concern is sewer and, because that's uh you don't, you're not going to reduce what's flowing naturally, but you cannot increase it at all.
Right.
That's the way I feel it, and that's
Thing is that the lot is elevated.
It's
Above the road.
Right.
So they've only got one catch base at the at the lower part of that lot.
Yeah, I was looking at the plan for that. So he, basically, we can't, if you look at the elevation lines, the elevation lines, they can't make it so the water flows off the wall. That's just, that's just the, that's just rule number one. Not no more water than naturally already flows on and flow off. But you know, it's a hill. And
Right, but as you cover areas with pavement and buildings,
That's why you have
There's nothing to soak that up, and when it's all ledge,
Well, that's why
Not going to be installed.
Well, that's why, what you have to do is under those um, infiltration points, you have to dig down and put in, usually it's sand or rock. Um, and
Minimum Leaching area.
It's very much like leaching area, and you have to go down so that the water gets down into the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my neighbor below me on the hill that when I built Rhode Island had flooding issues in one of his bedrooms. And when I built my place, I put in a rain garden, which is actually a cheaper solution there to me.
Yeah.
And I put in the permeable driveway. I solved his flooding problem. Basically, I absorbed all the water on the uphill, got it to go deeper into the ground.
Yeah.
And that saved him. Now, it cost me a few truckloads of of that material, but it actually made the, his problem go away.
Yeah.
Which is strange, but it's, it does work that way. You want to capture that water and get it to go deep. And it actually helps recharge the wells too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you've got to engineer it. It's not just a, you throw a hole in the ground. Someone actually has to calculate out it's forty-three, forty-three inches a year is what we deal with. You have to deal with a one, at least a one-inch storm. I mean, it's actually point nine.
So what if, what if they hit all ledge down here?
Then they have to
Because I'm across the street and it's a basin.
There's a lot of ledge there.
I'm sitting in a basin, so when it rains, that fills up. And I start to get water in the basement.
Yeah.
So it, and there's no place for it to go. I mean, I've done um, drainage and piping to bring it off and over the back.
Yeah.
Um, it still doesn't help.
What you have to do is, it is, did you have an engineer come in and say, here's how is what you've got for depth? Here's the channel you gotta cut and put in like a six-inch pipe.
Oh, I was dealing, I was just dealing with the water coming off the roof.
Yeah, no, you actually have to engineer it. You have to, you actually, your problem, do you have a place that's much lower on your property?
Yeah, over the cliff in the backyard.
So if you basically add in this lot, you'd have to pass the channel through the ledge.
I don't think that's happening.
All the water, seriously about and run it right up.
Maybe watch one one of the pipes to that drainage ditch in the back of the
But seriously, you're you're But seriously, your, your problem can be solved. It's just, it, but it does cost money, you know, but you do it once. And then for the next two hundred.
That's the thing, my concern is that there's so much water even coming from uphill from my driveway. There's a feeder spring.
Yeah.
I mean, that thing is going constant days after it stopped draining.
Yeah.
To the point where it's kind of washed out the end of the driveway.
Yeah, some of the old wells, just that they would find springs are that right, they dig wells.
That's right on, that's right on, on, I guess the town side on my stone wall.
Yeah.
And there's also a well across the street, which I don't even know that that's the current distance. They put a well in a year and a half ago, a year ago. A brand new well.
The town, the, the board of health deals with all, all of that, that they may have been doing.
That they shut them down that day. My wife called and they were drilling a well, so we, I went up and I talked to the fellow and he says, that was drilled, well, he says, we're putting four wells in. So my wife called the town, the building inspector went down there and shut them down, and now they have it on the map as a proposed well, but that well is there. They kept it, they left and they went home.
Yeah.
So they just, the developer scares me.
He's not on.
It's just, he's just throwing everything against the wall and seeing what's going to stick. But Mr. Henderson, your comment about when you put that, the. Well, you can disperse.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you call it again?
Infiltrator.
Okay, so you come down off of the, off of the four hundred feet or, or the four hundred and thirty feet. You come down and put that at four hundred and eighteen feet, say, to catch the water. I'm down at four hundred feet. Now you're dumping all that concentrated water right down at four hundred and eighteen feet. That's just going to perk right down into the side of my race system. Because I'm like twenty.
You still have, I'm so, I'm so sorry, but the meeting's still going on and we're discussing the issues after you. The app can be a bit of a smart if you're going to take more comment.
That's true. Okay, so let's let the engineer, let's let the engineer do it.
Thank you.
Great, five minutes. Other than fixing. The. Yeah.
I'm talking to voting number, try to vote to approve.
Yes.
Yes. Building is outside. It's live. Volume side.
Sorry. Is any, any of the business?
Close the meeting.
Close the meeting.